Yeah, so Super Tenet Report is actually gonna be a big chunk tonight. We got a bunch of stuff to run through, a couple of things that are getting off agenda. But I do wanna start by recognizing a whole bunch of special guests of the audience tonight. And tonight we are joined by several teams and several individuals who were winners in the, there's some more, 2017 Elementary Math Meet, which was an awesome competition. A lot of fun and also a lot of very smart kids sort of on display. I'm gonna read through the list of winners and tell you what they won and who, but I do wanna introduce Mark Plasenoga, who is one of the founders of the Math Meet. And Mark, if you don't mind just saying a couple of words and then we'll recognize the kids.
Sure. Thanks for having us again for the ninth time.
Yeah.
So, we have a math program in our elementary schools that, it's not just me, Amy here, and Dave Durant, and a bunch of others coordinate the Math Meet. But we also coordinate the individual schools who have volunteers who run the program at the individual schools. So, every elementary school from fourth and fifth grade, I think some of them might even go to second grade, have volunteers that organize. These kids will get up in the morning, one day a week, early in the math, and have a little bit of fun. So, they do that all season long. We have two Math Meets throughout the year. We have one in January, it's kind of a big sort of Math Meet warm-up event, no trophies involved. And then in April, at the end of the season, we have all five schools participate, the grades three, four, and five, for competitive math. We do whiteboard rounds, answer questions, we do speed rounds, Jeopardy kind of thing. And we also, fifth grade, they take optional written test. There's some awardees tonight. Tonight, we had three perfect scores on that written test from fifth graders. And there's questions on there that I pulled from a math count competition that we use in the middle school. So, it's a pretty tough test, and to have three out of twenty, like, eight fifth graders score perfect. So, it's all about the kids. It's about the principals. I see Dawn here, I don't know the principals of the other school. She is. They started it, basically, you know. Kristen brought it from Milton, came to Martha Jones, kind of pulled some parents together. And we've been doing it for nine years now, and it's been terrific. So, I won't say anymore. I think at the Math Meet, we had somewhere around a hundred and eighty kids participate through those three grades. And it was just fun, everybody did fine. And I really wanna thank John, the administration, the school committee, for allowing us to come here and get recognized. Support from the district has been phenomenal. Thank you.
So, kids, here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna, we got a whole bunch of names to go through. We have pretty cool certificates for all of you, and Mr. Plasenoga has them. And so, all of those will get you up here, take a picture. You're certainly welcome to stay, parents. Also, I'm guessing that you're gonna go right out the door. And Mr. Plasenoga will pass out this. So, I guess I could start, what do you want, is it individual or team?
Why don't you do, start with third grade and do the teams.
Okay, do the teams first. Nine years ago, I didn't need these reading glasses, anyway, so I'm gonna have to look at these. So, third grade, the winning team was from the Downey School. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna read off the, all the kids individually and have them come down. Okay, starting with Adriana Cirillo. Asher Shillan. Krishna Hoon. Melissa Yang. Ben Tang. Matthew Bagdassarian. Vedant Ayengar. Brianna Maxwell. Claire Doherty. And Jasmine Beecham. And congratulations, Downey School, very great. Should we take a picture?
Everybody, you say cheese.
This kid's, um, can we, do you want to? Good job, Downey School. Well, Mr. Lewis is coming. Okay. One, two, three. Okay, great job, everyone. You guys wanna go back to seats or you wanna stand? Okay. The fourth grade winners are from the Hamlin School. Fourth grade at Hamlin, starting with Caleb Meredith. Ella Zhu. Catherine Donlin. Max Farah. Okay, let's take a, we're gonna look at the screen.
You missed Kate Sullivan. Kate, Kate, I'm sorry, you missed Kate Sullivan.
Oh, she's on my list. All right, here we go. One, two. Okay, great job. Okay, moving on to the fifth grade winners are from the Deerfield. Starting with Justin Yamaguchi. Ryan Hughes. Olivia Homler. Jason Guo. Timmy Sterling. Kay Sibley. Dylan Walsh. Han Yan Yang. Holly Seed. Oliver Rossi. Ethan Walsh. Grace Stuppanow. So, the next batch of students are winners of the, Mr. Plasenoga referred to it, the fifth grade, fifth grade written competition. And we actually had a tie for second place, and these two kids got twenty-two or twenty-four correct, which I find still amazing. And those two kids here, Vic Ganson from the Hamlin School. And Warren Vogel from the Sheehan School. And then we have a tie, three, a three-way tie for the first place, score of twenty-four to twenty-four, still a perfect score in this case, starting with Sean Towell from the Downey School. Jeffrey Pham from the Martha Jones School. And Jason Guo for the Deerfield.
Yes, my.
Oh, here he is, let's clap for him.
But I know.
You arrived.
Right on time.
Clap anyway.
So, even though I called this meeting to order, this is the meeting of the year where the school committee reorganizes and votes in a new slate of officers. And so, for one minute, I get to direct the meeting. The first, or businesses, nominations for a chair for next year.
So, nominee Carol Lewis next year.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Tony, so, of course, I just said a second by Tony, all in favor of Carol Lewis as a chair?
No discussion.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, so, next up, we need a nomination for the assistant chair of the school committee. Do I have a nomination?
I'll have Brian Kelly.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'm guessing there's no discussion.
Definitely no discussion.
All in favor? Excellent, congratulations. Well done. Nomination for clerk of the school committee?
I'll nominate Charlie Donovan as clerk.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, no discussion, I'm sure. All in favor?
Congratulations.
So, before we continue, though, it's always, to be on this school committee and to be a chair is really a, a great commitment and a great responsibility. And there is one person on here who's been a chair several times, and she just finished her most recent continuous chair, and we just wanna thank her for, I always wanna thank her anyway, not just for being chair, but for her amazing number of years on this school committee. So, for that, we present you with this token of appreciation.
Can I use this at home?
You can. You can.
Yeah, so let me, so I have a, if you will, just sort of sit back, I have a bunch of stuff to run through. So, I first wanna take the opportunity, since the last meeting, we've had a lot of major announcements in the personnel world, starting with the appointment of a new assistant superintendent. And like, apparently Parks has synthesized some of her regrets, and she wanted to be here. But I do wanna introduce our new assistant superintendent, and that's Allison Worshus, principal of the district. I don't wanna speak family, but it's a phenomenal choice. And Allison did a test drive in this seat a couple of years ago to kind of maternity leave, and we all know what a incredible job you did, and Westwood is lucky to keep you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Allison. Really, very, very honored, and it felt very fitting this year, I've sent this to a few folks, but this is actually my twentieth year in Westwood High School. And this is the year where the eighth grade that is leaving the middle school is the eighth grade class that my son was part of when we lived in Westwood. So, it's nice for me to be graduating along with that group of students and kind of moving on to the next phase of my career here, and I couldn't be more thrilled to stay in Westwood and assist to join this committee. So, thank you very much, it's a huge honor.
And also, since last meeting, Kyle Grady, the current assistant principal, has gotten a wonderful opportunity, actually, I have my own district, the Shulman Regional School District, to be the principal of the Hale Middle School in Stowe. And so, we, I don't think Kyle's here tonight. Already slapping. So, anyway, great opportunity for Kyle, he did an unbelievable job here in Westwood. I mean, I'm leaving too, but I'm gonna miss him. But, we were very fortunate that, we need to fill that slot for a year, we're very fortunate that we have someone in-house who we think is highly capable, great potential as a future administrator, and that's our Deerfield School psychologist, Matt Kuplins. And Matt's here tonight, and Matt's gonna serve as the interim assistant principal next year. Matt's an exceptional employee, has great relationships with kids and parents alike, and those two things along will make up a very successful administrator up there next year, so we wish you well and congrats.
Thank you, I'm looking forward to this next chapter and continuing a lot of what's been going on up there over the past twenty years or so. Thank you.
So, also, all these moves are happening because, well, they're happening, that necessitated us to go search for Thursday Middle School principal, I just wanna give a quick update on that. Emily sent out some information to staff and parents earlier today, but we do have three finalists coming to visit the district next week. Parents are invited to meet the candidates on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, and again, this went on an email, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, from nine to nine-thirty in the Thursday Middle School library, so it's an opportunity for parents to meet and greet the candidates and participate in some Q and A. I also found out, Emily said they're also planning to livestream, and we were talking about this the other day, livestream it for anybody who can't make it in person, and the link to that livestream, as well as an online feedback form, so people can provide feedback of the candidates, that'll be emailed out on Monday one. So, to everybody, I'm sure anybody, the audience will look out for that. So, that search is moving along well, and Tony's on that search committee, I don't know if you ever even hear.
No, I think you'll have three great candidates, so it's gonna be, I encourage you, if you can, to attend that or watch the livestream, give your, they're three great candidates, and I'm excited for the future.
Do you know when they're making the names public, when you're making the names public for the committee?
Well, they sent out the email to the parents that had a link to the resume, so I guess.
So, yeah, so you know what, I will, let me pull it up.
Okay.
I'll come, we'll come back to that then. So, a couple of things, I just actually wanna thank the school committee members, many of you came to participate in some of our end-of-year sit panels, or sit presentations, the kids do a culminating presentation at the end of the year, it's, that in and of itself is kind of a challenge and skill, you know, sort of developing public presentation skills. And so, thank you all for coming, they were phenomenal this year.
I couldn't believe how impressive I, I have to say, I've been to before, and these kids were so professional, so comfortable presenting, and, and what they presented was multi-septi, so I thought it was impressive.
It was, it was great, I mean, it really just shows, of course, some is innate ability, I think, but for the most part, it really shows what, what this district gives to our kids, the training and the teaching, all of it, the teachers, the baggage, so, they were, they were all impressed, I sat on three of them, all very different topics, and equally impressive.
Great, thank you. Well, I just, so the parents aren't aware of it, it's, it's an idea that came out of the school system, I don't think anyone else does it, it was done with no new money to start with, nine kids to twenty to forty, and they defend an idea they have before a panel, they're accepted. A teacher wanted them, and an empty community mentor to work with them, and they set up companies, set up websites, it's incredible what they're allowed to get let loose, but I wanna compliment, you know, John and the support for a new idea that just was allowed to happen, and these kids think it's one of the greatest experiences of their high school education. And the mentors who worked with them, just one example, a kid said, "How do I pay for college? What's a, you know, what's a retirement plan? All this stuff, I'm gonna have to..." So, the kid worked with a state planner, sat in our meetings, developed the course to come back and teach kids things about what your parents are gonna face, what you, that's how imaginative some of the ideas have been and what's come out of this, but I wanna thank the leadership here, how this came out, it was an idea with no new money to just get the thing started, and kids are very lucky to have the leadership here, and the teachers, the administration to allow this to happen.
Great, well, thank you. Now, kind of moving down here, this is just a, an invitation, and it sort of saved the date, but you remember, Westwood High School alum, Jack Jarden, who was in the class of 2013, died in a car accident last, last summer, and Jack was an unbelievable kid, so it shook the entire school community, the entire community to the matter. Jack was a incredibly talented filmmaker here in Westwood High School, was sort of legendary in the video production department, and was actually at Emerson studying, I'm gonna call it film study, I don't know what the technical term was, but after Jack passed away, a group of parents set up a fundraising campaign, a GoFundMe campaign, and ended up raising over eighty-three thousand dollars. And that money, the intent of that money was to do two things, one, a portion of the funds was going to be used, is going to be used to establish two scholarships, one to a student who will be pursuing a film or fine arts degree in college, the other to a student who has demonstrated kindness and has been considerate, polite, and selfless with fellow students, just much like Jack, much like Jack was, those two students, we've identified who they will be. But, the point of this whole thing is on, on, all I need to say too, so scholarships, first part of it, funding, second part was to, I guess for lack of a better term, invest it into our video production room facility here in Westwood High School, just to make it, you know, better, and more usable, and put better technology in there, and so, we've actually done that, done that work. It's, it's pretty slick, actually, for such a small space, I wonder, have you seen it?
Yeah, I'm taking video production right now, and it's really awesome.
Yeah, it's good, so we kinda built, I wish we could show, next, maybe next meeting we'll show pictures, but we built a little, little studio within the, within the video production room, and it's pretty slick, and we have some really high-end equipment in there. So, anyway, that, we're gonna have kind of a, what's the right word, a studio and scholarship dedication on Wednesday, May thirty-first, at seven PM, in the video production room. If you haven't received the formal invite, we'll, we'll get it out to you, but we'd love to have you there, and we're also gonna award the two scholarships that night to the two kids, so, anyway.
Where is that?
It's, how do I describe it, it's sort of at the end of the English wing, so, have around the corner from the main office, if you walk out the door from the main office, go straight and take a left in the, in one of those main quarters. A one, what is it?
It's one forty something.
We'll send directions to Red Cross. So, anyway, I, Jack, Jack was just a phenomenal kid, and, you know, crazy tragedy, but it's nice to see something, something done, and it's on, it's well-deserved, so, anyway, Wednesday, May thirty-first, at seven PM. That's, that's that, kind of moving down, just some news, and I wish Emily was here to share this, but Emily applied for a grant to the Foundation for Westwood Education to help fund the pilot year of J-Term, and they very generously gave a twenty thousand dollars grants to do that, and that, that, we framed the grant as sort of general implementation of the, of the J-Term, and the steering committee, the J-Term Steering Committee, will oversee the distribution of that twenty thousand dollars, most of the money will be used for things like transportation, or entrance fees, maybe museums, or course materials that they need, so, we're really excited and extremely grateful to the foundation, you know.
Can I ask a question? Do you have any idea what the cost for J-Term is? I don't, you start hearing them.
Yeah, I don't know sort of where it's landed.
Oh, I'll ask.
So, sorry about that, but anyway, thank you.
Can I just say one word?
Yeah, please.
The, the J-Term, again, is another idea, at the end of June, and everybody's taking their exams, people have noticed kind of not exactly the best environment to study, so, this idea is for a week at the end of June, all these freshman sophomore junior kids to take a course, five days, all day, on a subject not tied to Westwood High. Imagine coming up with this idea, so they went out, sought out the ideas, and there's forty courses being considered to be taught during that period. And Mr. Ganson, they got all the teachers to agree to do it, you know, on an objective, this is a great idea, but it's a unique experience, that most kids, freshman, three years that have a chance to take a course that, you know, that never would have probably happened again, so, again, John, thank, you know, I wanna thank the committee for supporting it, but more for Emily and you to come up with this idea and, and get the support of the whole teacher body.
Thank you, Charlie, yeah, I actually think this is gonna be the, I don't know, it's gonna separate Westwood from the pack when this thing takes off, and I really can't take credit, although maybe I will when I leave, I'll take credit for it. It's Emily's vision, and she, she deserves really all the credit for the idea and getting it, getting it off, off the ground. So, that's that, thank you. I do wanna share a couple more things, this, this, some pictures, you know, we talked about the idea of doing coding, you know, programming at the elementary level, and recently, one of our instructional technology coaches, Judy Kress, did a, did a coding lesson at Deerfield, and a parent of a Deerfield student who happens to be a tech specialist in a wallpole pool of schools heard about it, and invited our team to go to wallpole to introduce coding to this elementary classroom. So, last week, Steve Willett, Judy Kress, Mary Comer, who's another instructional technology specialist for us, last week they went to wallpole, Judy Kress led the lesson, she introduced a concept of coding to second graders, and they put it out in small groups to do some hands-on activities. Steve told me they used a... Steve told me they use a, it's called a Code and Go robot mouse activity set, and I, I've seen it, you basically, I'm trying to see if there's, it's like a, it's like a track, and this little mouse moves along, but you have to pro, you have to do some basic programming, coding, to make the mouse move to do what you want it to do, it's, I think it's pretty sophisticated, I couldn't figure it out, I was watching my second graders do it, but it's impressive. So anyway, I, I thought it was really cool that Westwood was taking its, its, I don't know, talent on the road to Walpole, and it was a huge success, I just wanted to share that with you and show you the picture. So, thank you to Judy Kress, Mary Comer, and Steve Willett for that, it was pretty neat.
John, we are planning to expand that now, right, in our elementary?
Yeah, right, we're, we're hoping to expand coding down to the elementary, like a special, much like P E R music, yeah, it's, it's unbelievable.
Two years ago, I went to Martha Jones, the PTO sponsor, gave the money to Martha Jones, and a high school robotics kid was teaching the second graders this, so, one kid had a computer, the others on the floor with the robot, and next year I went, and it was the fifth graders teaching the second graders how to do coding. We're now extending that more widely to all the schools.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be great, thank you. I'm gonna, gonna jump to the final, final thing before we get into some business about class size enrollment, but I do wanna take a few minutes to acknowledge our amazing student rep from this year, Owen Doherty, who's graduating soon. It's been really fun to watch Owen in action, actually, Owen, I'm not used to you in second, second grade, but you've grown into a just amazing, amazing young man, and you have such an incredibly bright future ahead, and I sort of feel lucky that I get to watch you in a small way this year at the table, everything that comes out of your mouth is so thoughtful and on point, and he's off to Columbia this year, and we just wanna thank you for being just a great kid and a great member of this committee, and we, the committee has something to say too, but we were gonna send you off with some Westwood stuff, you know, so you don't, so you don't forget us, but, great job this year.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you're a great teacher.
Owen, you're a great example of what Westwood students are like, so congratulations and best of luck.
Thank you so much.
At Columbia and in Paris, so.
Good job, I will note that I've never heard the superintendent refer to school committees as a football, I don't point like that.
When I see it, I'll point it out.
Nice job.
Owen, great job, and.
Just for you?
And, oh, good, good luck. Yeah, congratulations, yeah, great job. You might stop in, you know, if you want to.
I got it.
And I'll just add, that not only do I know that this kid is one of the brightest that has come out of Westwood schools, but he's also one of the kindest, and so, I know that from your fellow students, so, I'm gonna tie it behind you.
No, I just, step over.
How's that?
I just didn't wanna get all the coffee, want to.
All right, you guys can photoball.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, we are gonna move into, I put this on superintendent's report, 'cause, 'cause we do have a lot of guests tonight, and happy to have you all. The, this is related to, and we do this frequently, but I wanna spend some time giving you an update on the projected enrollment for next year, and just walk through a few areas that we've been talking about, and again, I do wanna thank Emily, sort of spearheading, spearheading the organization of this, so I'll, I'm gonna jump in sort of for her. So, let me, so this is our chart, we, we see all the time, we sort of added a column here, just, just a total, just so you can see the total enrollment, which is just more free information, and then we also added a column, just an average class size, just to give kind of relative view of how, how we're doing in the district, which I think is, I think is quite well. So we've been talking about a few areas over the last couple of months, and I'm gonna start up here at the Hamlin School. So this here, by the way, is projected enrollment for next year, it's the best information we have as of literally today, midday, late day actually, and this particular chart has what I would call our recommendations built in over there, okay, let me, let me talk about this. So, the Hamlin kindergarten numbers were, were getting high, so if you remember last meeting, we, Josh Palmer had a really innovative idea, and we subsequently executed that idea, and we invited Hamlin families to volunteer to enroll in our Deerfield K-one class, because Deerfield numbers were a little too low to kind of accomplish this, this grade, this class, grade and class structure we've had for a few years. By the way, thank you, Josh, not only for the idea, but Josh also held the parent information night, I think a week or two ago, which was very helpful, and I wanna report that three families have in fact decided to, to take us up on that offer, which really helped solve a problem, or at least, you know, I think helped solve a problem. So, with, so three kids were here, they shifted down to here, so it leaves kindergarten, excuse me, kindergarten numbers at Hamlin at twenty-two and twenty-two, which is within guidelines, and it allows us to run, again, back to the structure, one K class, one K-one, and one grade one. Next year, again, these numbers, they're small, Deerfield numbers are pretty low, but it, it's, it's super helpful and enables us to have a robust, like a viable program at all, at all three levels, so that really works, so, so that's one, that's two. We've had a lot of discussion, any questions on that, by the way, I don't mean to just blow by that.
So, there's still. In my understanding, Emily, there is still additional, at Deerfield, additional people wanting to volunteer, is that correct?
Yeah, so, so if you look at these numbers, so you, yeah, you have capacity.
Right.
Yeah, you do. Now, we also, we don't, we don't make this K-one too big though, right, Josh, we kinda like it around sixteen, seventeen, because of the nature of the class.
Yeah, that's, in the invitation, the letter that we sent to the Hamlin families, we said, you know, just waiting for sixteen to eighteen, and half being eighteen, we actually, since that meeting, we've had some additional kindergartners move in to enroll to Deerfield, so, you know, depending, we've got, we've got one or two that we haven't, you know, could even hit that eighteen number, the number we have currently.
So you're gonna cut it off at a certain point, or have you decided that that's it, three families?
Well, well, you know, the deadline's passed, there was a reminder set out, so I don't, I mean, we'll see what happens, but you get a little teeny bit of room, but not, not much.
What typically, which students choose the K-one, the Ks or the ones?
It's mixed.
It's supposed to definitely be fifty-fifty.
I don't, it's a little less kindergarten, right?
Yeah, you probably have ten first graders and ten sixth kindergartners, or ten eighth, if we have a kindergartner.
So that was a really innovative, creative solution, and we, we think it worked, which is, which is good. So the other, the other thing that I'd like to propose is that these numbers here, so the, the current first grade at Martha Jones, so the incoming second grade, they hit, well, look, you can do the math, it's sixteen times three, forty-eight, so two class sizes, twenty-four, above guideline, our guidelines, I wanna come back to that for a moment, our guidelines K-two are eighteen to twenty-two, so twenty-four is, you know, not significant, but it was above guideline. So, we are recommending to the committee that you actually do split these into three classes. And I'm a little uncomfortable with this, I, I don't like to buy design, create class sizes this small, 'cause, just 'cause we have finite resources.
Right, well, we don't really have any.
You don't have any other option, well, I mean, you, you, you do, but I, I do recommend this, and Donna's here, but Donna is recommending this, this particular split. We always look at the composition of the class, we always just look at individual needs, and we think this is the right one, and we do have an, an allocated position, so it's basically cost natural.
And you have the space.
We have the space.
Correct.
I'm gonna jump down, and I'm gonna come back to this, I'm gonna jump down here, so this, this is what it is, so we have a singleton at Hamlin, it's twenty-six, there isn't, there is paraprofessional support in that class, which we would recommend keeping, and it's working, it's higher than we.
Has it been, has it been twenty-six all the way?
Um, this year, it's been.
This year, but not as a singleton?
So, you know, so we, we are recommending that we just sit tight here, and again, it's working, and it just wouldn't be, I don't, don't even think it really would be responsible to do class sizes thirteen, frankly, I don't think the teachers or the kids.
Is there any possibility of asking parents if they wanna send their kids out of Deerfield?
I, I, sure.
Can you imagine?
Fifth grader though, yeah.
I'm just, no, at that point.
Well, yeah, so I will say this, is that, you know, we do have a longstanding intra-district transfer policy, so people do ask, you know, and so I think that, for the most part, if people wanna change, they, they ask, could be wrong.
So when you say we have a paraprofessional in there, what's the, what are the hours? Is the person in there full-time?
Full-time, I think, I think it's full-time, yeah, I'm sorry, it's, okay, so that's that. Now, I know we have, I know we have some parents here tonight, I don't necessarily know them by face, but just from emails and stuff, we do have a group of parents who are paying close attention, as we, as are we, to the incoming grade three, the projection right now is twenty-four and twenty-three in grade three, that is technically within guidelines, so the guideline from grades three to five is twenty-two and twenty-four, that obviously is, you know, one of them's at guideline, and it's really nudging at guideline. I know there's a lot of concern about the number of houses in the Martha Jones District that are up for sale, which is a very real concern.
Yes, I went through M L S this morning, we have twenty, by my count, twenty-one houses in the Martha Jones area that are on the market or under agreement, but that doesn't mean that necessarily any of them are gonna be in that grade, but they could be, you know.
What I would say on this is, you know, I, I'm, I'm not recommending, you know, Emily and I have been talking about this a lot obviously, but we are not recommending doing anything tonight on this, we, I'm gonna reiterate, when I say, at this time of the year, we are quite literally monitoring these every, every day, and because my office receives registrations, right, and so, this, this chart changes by the day, certainly by, by the week, and what I say is, let's keep on monitoring it for the next few weeks, next month, we could theoretically go deep into the summer and still be able to split this into three, and hire a very talented, highly qualified teacher.
And we've done it.
Yeah, and we have, and I, I just don't, I don't wanna jump the gun, and we do have time, I feel very confident that even, even if we're mid-August, I mean that, we could, we could find a highly qualified teacher. Now, I know it's not ideal, no, I'm sorry, right, but, yeah, but is that, is that fair to say, I mean, based on the number of applications?
I suppose in a position have two hundred and twenty-nine applicants, interviewed six people today for a short-term sub-jog, I understand it's different, but all six of them, like, would hide and feel comfortable, so I'm definitely not worried about the quality of candidates we would candidate.
Are you comfortable with this, what we're, what John is proposing, waiting, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I think we have to wait, I mean, I think, like you said, it's, it's within the guidelines, so we can't add classes when we're in, within the guidelines, and certainly we have the capacity, I mean, even if it stayed at those numbers and didn't go up, I would be looking at math and literacy support, I would be looking at what are, what are the type of instructional apps I wanna put into that, that classroom and things like that, and it is, I do understand that it's happening, those numbers are high each year, these are, these numbers do include people who have not registered, but that I know about, that have moved, that are moving into the district, so, these numbers are people who have come toward the school, have showed a purchase and sale, so I know they're coming in, even though they may not have actually gone to the office and registered yet, but I know that they have the purchase and sale.
How many of those are there that have just registered with you?
Um, so there are, we have one student leaving that class to move to Sheehan, and then we have three people that are enrolling in that class.
So John, what, let's say it's August now.
We're gonna do public participation, just let the committee finish the discussion, and then we'll go right into that, right, I mean, so I don't mean to speak for you on that.
No, that's okay, people speak for themselves.
Do you have a question?
But last year we did add a, was it last year or the year before, we added a class in August, in summer.
Charlie?
So it's, let's say it's August now, and let's say, what movement in those numbers could trigger getting another teacher, if we get three more kids, or four kids, or what, what, what number would cause us to, to do what we did for the second grade?
Well, I can tell you historically, that's all I can say, twenty-six always was our, our actual trigger, I think there were, you know, probably twenty-five would give you that same, kind of maybe pause, you know, to.
Two, two or three kids, you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, and it might, and it might happen, I just, I, I just wouldn't, I wouldn't jump the gun now.
And August isn't too late, do you think?
It's, it's, it's late, but it's not too late, I mean, we, there are times where we hire right up until the end, and again, if there were, if there were high school chemistry?
Right.
I'd say, okay, you know, we don't have the candidates, we have like five, right? But we have, we're sitting today on literally hundreds, several hundred applications, that's just a supply and demand issue, so, plenty of support.
There are one, there are many, many qualified elementary, and not all of them are brand-new, I mean, there are subs that are new.
Some are worth restoring.
Yeah, and we have long-term subs in the building that are subbing and things like that, that are good candidates, so.
Just the math and literacy support, what, describe it a little bit to the parents, you know, what, how does that take the pressure off the, the classroom teacher?
Well, it depends on the needs of the group, certainly, but we typically put, like this year, because the first grade class had twenty-three and twenty-three, everyone's the numbers right now, twenty-two and twenty, twenty-three and twenty-three, in first grade, I loaded a lot of our literacy support in that grade level. Now, first grade gets a lot of literacy support, anyway, that's where we want kids reading, so they get a lot of literacy support, when you're talking now, class sizes in grade one and twenty and twenty, there is some flexibility to move some of that literacy support to the third grade. We have math support that's in all of the grades, we have technology support, we have some flexibility with our librarian schedule in terms of any type of support with students, because the librarian does have a little bit more flexibility in her schedule in order to support classes. In first grade this year, there's an instructional assistant, I allocate most of her time to first grade, so there are def, there are definitely different ways to look at it, and I think the parents are pretty familiar with the math and literacy support. How much it goes in there depends on the assessments and the, the data that we take at the beginning of the year on students, and who's reading, and what help they need, and what types of support they need, but certainly, we can front-load some of the support into the bigger classes during literacy blocks and things like that. But the, I, and I know these numbers look high, when you look at a chart with all these low numbers, but they, you know, I don't know what they were historically, but, you know, twenty-two to twenty-four has been in the past a pretty typical class size for three, four, and five, and so.
Any other questions for your students?
Yeah.
That, that's, that's my recommendation, yeah.
All right, so we keep a watchful eye, and monitor for you some. So at this point, we move to our first opportunity for public participation, for those of you who are new to our school communities, 'cause I know I've not seen many of the faces we have, so I just wanna let you know that this is an opportunity for you to comment or ask questions about anything related to what's on the agenda, anything school-related, please, if you're, if you wanna participate, stand up, state your name and your address, and we're happy to hear from you. So at this point, this is our first opportunity today for public participation, go for it.
I'd go.
Oh, yes, you're right.
Hi. No problem. My name's Jamie Cecilman, I live on twenty-nine Baker Street in the Maze, and I have a child in the incoming grade three group, his name's Will Cecilman, and representing a large group of second, going into third grade parents here today, we are very concerned with those numbers, and it makes us very anxious to know that we have to wait till August to find out if these numbers are gonna stick, especially when friends of ours who live in, in one of the Martha Jones neighborhood had two houses closed this week. Especially when, um, friends of ours who live in, in one of the Martha Jones neighborhood had two houses closed this week, and we know they're incoming third graders. So that would put our numbers now at, at twenty-five and twenty-four, which would cut us over the guideline, which we believe is twenty-four. Is that right for, for you?
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's a guideline, right? But yeah, so, uh, grade three, five, um, twenty-two to twenty-four.
So that twenty-four, twenty-five kid per class, does the committee feel comfortable with that many kids in the class?
I mean, I, we just answered, I mean, we just answered that. I mean, historically, twenty-six has been our abs, kind of absolute trigger. There are times where it's lower. Um, it really depends on, it's, it depends on the situation.
And yeah, what we've done in the past, this is, I know nobody wants to hear this, but this is not new. This, if, if we could record the last session of every year, we would have this same conversation. And it's a big concern, and all, and it has been for a long time, and, and typically, this is what we do. We monitor. There have been years where, you know, Joseph and I have gone into classrooms and we look at the composition. Not that we're the experts, but we go there, we talk to the teachers, we talk, we've spoken with Donna and other principals before. So, all that is to say, we understand your angst, I think. Um, and you're all advocating for your children as we all do. And, um, we will-
Because to us, the numbers seem very similar to the grade two situation where they got, they've been given an extra class. So if our numbers fall to where we, we're gonna make-
But the guidelines are different for the, for the younger classes. And it also depends on the composition of the class too. But that doesn't mean that we're ignoring you or that we're not considering, we know, we understand your concerns. And we will. We don't, we don't go off of this, and we're, we'll be here. We'll be, we'll be watching it. More importantly, the, uh, the administration's teams.
Christina Martin, twenty-three Brookfield. Um, I was wondering if you could tell us a little bit more about, I'm interested in kindergarten specifically, what the data says about where class sizes should be ideally for learning?
Well, I'm just gonna give a very general statement and say, there is very little evidence that, that class size has an impact on student achievement. There's been a few studies that people refer to all the time, that, that come, you know, come and go. The number-one indicator, as soon as a student achievement, is the quality of the teacher in the classroom. And I would say by every one of our teachers at Westwood Public Schools, we have high-quality teachers. There's really no hard evidence that, that lower class size. I mean, there's some, there's some studies that have shown, you know, significantly lower classes, you know, have some margin. But there are small studies and there are old studies, and so I just, I, we, we talk about this in education all the time.
Well, I, I think too, that I've spoken to Emma this week. You know, we're, we talked about having a, um, very in-depth conversation and presentation early in the fall about class size, and we're looking at the current research, because we haven't done that for a while, and, and discussing it, so that we hopefully, um, can get information out to public.
I thought the research, what I saw was that it's K, if it has an effect on reading, it's at the lowest levels. K, K one, maybe two, because that's how kids learn how to read. So if there's a, if there's an appreciable effect on learning and skills, it's at the lower levels.
So, yeah, and again, I make a sweeping generalization here, but, you know, we, we tend to talk about the difference between twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. There's no research ever that, that shows that this, now, if you're talking twelve versus twenty-four or something like that, that's, yeah, sure, because, you know-
Twelve to one is where you get a very bad-
Well, actually, you're talking with twenty-one, twenty-two?
Right, we, we tend to talk too much about, I think-
Difference between twenty and twenty-four is not really, right?
But I think, I think Joseph, and that's what I wanted to come back to. I appreciate you bringing that up again. Like, this committee really used to be, the guidelines are actually structured pretty well.
Yeah.
And they're very typical, yeah, you need to have, kinda read.
That's great.
Can I just get clarification on what you said? That would be, like, amongst you or like with the public, or?
A school committee meeting has to be public.
Just, okay, so just like looking at and assessing whatever the current data is?
Having, yeah, yeah, we have the, having the research, the current research presented to us, and then discussing it, like, talking about it.
Okay. And then Dr. Antumichi, you seem to feel that the other data's outdated. Um, so as far as for those of us who are data-driven, the information saying the, you know, the number-one factor is the teacher, do you have, like, sources that you could point us to, just? Because I, I'm uncomfortable with a class size of twenty-two for my kindergartner. I know that's within the guidelines. I haven't seen, and granted, I'm looking at older studies, but the data's considered, to the best of my knowledge, the best over the longest term. Um, and the reason it's still being referenced is because the study was done well. Um, so I would love to see, you know, the other data that sort of speaks counter to that, to feel a little bit better about the numbers.
And that's why I think we're probably gonna have that kind of discussion.
But the fall will be too late for me. You know, my kid is gonna be in that class of twenty-two in the fall.
Can I say too, I mean, we're talking about the research or whatever, but, you know, we have finite resources, right? This is a K to twelve, pre-K to twelve public school system. Um, I don't know where we've determined that sixteen or seventeen is a, is a number that we can afford long-term. I, I'll be honest with you, I, I've lived through the, the highs and lows. I mean, people don't remember, this chart-
We've never had teens.
This is, this is the, I've been here twelve years. It's by far exponentially better than it's been in twelve years. There were times where this chart had, I think, upwards of fifteen, sixteen classes above guideline at all levels. So we need to create, create a sustainable plan and a sustainable budget. Um, I think also related to this, and I won't miss the fun on this, we have to talk about our grade configuration. This is becoming very difficult to manage. So there's all kinds of stuff, but it's not just about, it's also about what we can afford as the community. Um, and we're, we're lucky right now to have these numbers, but at some point, it's gonna, the bubble's gonna burst.
It's not just about the numbers. I mean, we've talked about, you know, teachers and, and their, and composition. But also, it's the composition of the class. I mean, I was told by one of the principals, I'm not gonna mention which one, but that the most difficult class that they had in their school was a class of seventeen kids. So it's not just the numbers that are important, you know, it's also the composition of the class.
I totally understand that, but you can't do anything about the personalities that come into school. You can do things about the class size. I think a lot of people in town moved to Westwood because of the public schools. I know they did.
Everybody. We, we all did. We all did.
Christine, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you-
And so we, it, just, so the financial argument, what can we afford, is really hard to stomach when we see a new fire station, a new police station, a new library. I understand that.
I don't get that money.
But I'm saying, maybe it's time, maybe it's time that we need to ask for it, because what was okay ten years ago, class sizes of twenty-four, maybe is no longer what, what people are looking for. And frankly, again, no matter how amazing of a teacher you are, if you have twenty-six, twenty-two, five-year-olds who are just learning how to be at school, physically bouncing off each other, in the tiny little space that we have at Hamlin, it doesn't matter how good you are, you're gonna spend more time managing bodies than teaching.
Okay, Christine, I, I, I get your point, and I'm not, I really don't wanna cut you off, but I know there are other parents here who, who'd like to, um, participate. Yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm Maria Veselowski. I'm at forty-three Webster Street. I'm also a Hamlin parent. And I have the experience of having, um, a child leave the Hamlin and go into the middle school next year. And I also have a kindergartner starting. Um, so I have been really thinking about this, and I'd like to just second, um, the concern here. I am also very concerned, um, about the class size as it is right now. I have a child that's coming in who's bilingual. This is gonna be his first year in an all-English-speaking environment. I have heard that this is a very boy-heavy group. And I've really observed, um, especially in the younger grades, how different the kids' levels of where they are behaviorally, energy-wise, knowledge-wise are. And I will say that the hardest years, um, for my older years have been kindergarten and first grade. And also, it was a really boy-heavy group, but smaller class sizes. Now, I'm completely hearing what you're saying, and I know that this is probably a little bit more of the same. But I came here tonight because this is a huge concern for me. This is something that a lot of us, um, people in Islington are watching really closely. Um, also because Islington is really expanding, and there are also a lot of houses for sale, and there's a lot of building going on. So I don't want this class to start maybe at twenty-two, twenty-three, and then to have a continuous discussion year after year about maybe adding a class. Because when you look at those averages, and when you think about the amount of money that people did spend to move here, and the sacrifices that they've had to make to do that, I can't justify, you know, as a parent, why, um, why my child has to be in a, in a class of twenty-three, twenty-four and be having a hard time when the averages are what they are. So I just wanted to share that with you. I don't really need an answer right now.
Thank you for sharing.
Just one more, one more bit of context. Did you mention, for example, English, sign language? You know, I just wanted to go back to, I think, what Charlie mentioned. So, and again, this is not the case even eight years ago. Every one of our classes, kindergarten classes, kindergarten aid, we have kindergarten, we have English, like we've talked about before. We have math specialists. We have literacy specialists. We have science specialists. These, so when you're talking about money and finite resources, you might make a trade-off, but do you wanna make a trade-off long-term? This will be a conversation with budget in the future. Do you wanna take away what I think makes Westwood special? Um, and, and quite frankly, deep, as far as instruction goes, or do you wanna just look at pure numbers? I would recommend you, you keep it the way it is. And you, and at some point, you need to make a choice.
A few years ago, we were concerned about the new kids coming in from the Westwood Station, renting out apartments. So we, we were kind of asking, could we ask the real estate agents to give us a heads-up? That they just made a deal with somebody that had kids and this, this, that, correct? Just as a heads-up, because I think if we knew some of this in July and not August, it might help. So one of my questions, maybe Joseph or Sock, you know, would it be worth asking real estate agents, a lot of you have made it, uh, as you're closing on a house, and you're aware this is a family with kids of this age coming in the system, could we just have an informal way of that being fed to us? So maybe in July, we know we've hit the limit instead. I don't know if that's possible. It doesn't seem to be too complicated to do, but it might help us a little bit to make these decisions sooner. The second thing is, three years ago, I really got into this issue, whereas I heard from a lot of parents. And what I suddenly began to appreciate is a couple things. But Donna said, it's not how many kids the teacher has, because the teacher doesn't teach twenty-four kids. They may, you know, there's probably four or five other teachers coming into that class. Out of twenty-five kids, five of them have special needs in Westwood. They need a lot of classroom time with special people. So it's not simply how many kids per teacher. It's really beginning to understand how much in resources have been spent in Westwood to support all this other form of teaching. So that if your kid's a little slow in math, they're getting special attention, a little slow in reading. So it's a little bit more complicated. It's an important first point to look at. Because when it gets to twenty-four, I'd be concerned too. But there's a lot more going on. When Donna says, we've done this before, we've been here every year, and you should be concerned, because it's your kids, but we've seen this, we've reacted, and the kids have made out well, but it's, it's the effort that's been made to put all those other teachers in place to fit in on that class, so it's not like the poor teachers there with twenty-four kids. But again, finally, two years ago, we submitted a budget for what we needed, and we're hammered. We had to fight to get more money. So when that comes up again, if it ever does, we need more parents getting out, supporting us, as we try to expand it, okay? Because we had to fight for nickels and dimes. One percent, one-tenth of one percent was a fight. Now, we made modest gains, but we're told we're asking for too much. So it's a little more complicated when, when you begin to sympathize with our budget, that we, John has to figure all this out. You gotta be there when we need you at some time, and it may not be our kids that year that need the help. But it's, there is a struggle that goes on. We're very lucky in this town. They have so much support for education, but sometimes not as much as we should.
And you know, I just wanna make, I wanna comment on something Christina said, the police station and the fire station, which, you know, make the town a better town. But they were able to do that without having to go out and ask for more money from taxpayers. Whenever we do anything, we have to go out for an override. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's so-
And if you've ever lived through the override process?
It's tough. It's a tough-
It's a very tough process.
If five of our laundry schools need to be replaced, a tremendous improvement. So that's coming down the bike in the next five years for us, and we need your help and advice.
Yes. Hi, my name's Amanda Phillips. Um, I also live on Webster Street in Islington, and I have a little boy in the middle of kindergarten as well. And I really appreciate everything you said related to kids with special needs. My son has some special needs, and he's, um, in a class of eighteen, it's pre-k class, and he's really struggling. I will say though, that Westwood Public Schools has been amazing thus far. I think we're in terms of planning for next year, so I feel really good about that. What I'm nervous about is just all the kids. I think academically, it's gonna be really supportive, but there aren't, from what I'm seeing, maybe there aren't even eyes in the class to see who's getting punched or to see who's getting picked on. There just seem to be a lot of kids in that class. Um, when you're looking at the chart, you know, looking at kindergarten through second grade, obviously that twenty-two number is there. So I guess my question is, what's the tipping point? What's the guideline? Um, I think you reviewed what the guidelines were for the upper grades, but for the little kids, what are the guidelines? When are you gonna kind of make that decision? Thanks.
Well, the guidelines, eighteen to twenty-two for kids in grade two, so.
So one more.
Well, yeah, it, it, we've historically, I mean, I don't, I would, the guideline literally is a guideline. It's not a policy. It's not, you know, Catholic stuff. So I guess we'd say it depends on the needs of the classroom, but, but that is the guideline that we've always used.
Just to answer your question too, Abby Haskin at the end here is in charge of our special needs. She does parental work.
She's from your home, right?
So I have kids who have special needs, so for some of them, I would suggest any of you that have special needs, Chris, or know of people, they have a committee of special needs parents. And the, the mothers of kindergartners get in their head, eighth-grade parents. It's wonderful. There's ten categories, so they're beginning to get into, this needs my kids have. We talk, so that would be very important to support you and tell other people about it. But Abby's the key person who has organized all this and has done wonderful jobs for this program.
And can I just make a comment? The president of that organization is sitting in the audience, and so we just need to acknowledge.
I, I was gonna say something after the class discussion. I was, I'll introduce myself, please.
Um, my name is Megan Brink. I live at forty-seven Briar Lane. I have a son entering second grade and a daughter entering kindergarten at Martha Jones. Um, I didn't know my son had a special need until I entered kindergarten, so I'm very new to the world of special education, and I'm jumping on board to do what I can to learn about what he's gonna face and, um, to meet other parents who, you know, might be able to support me in that journey. So, um, again, Megan Brink, I'm the president of the new CPAC as of next year, and we have a new board as of this week. We had a great presentation this week on executive functioning here in the library. We had like over thirty people come, which is record-breaking for any CPAC made, needed, and here passed. Um, so hopefully we're getting word out there. I don't know how I'm gonna need the school committee, but thanks for being here. So far, my son has been more than supportive at that school. It's just been an incredible experience.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Also, we should commend Abby for giving CPAC.
Yeah, and Abby was instrumental in helping me out.
That's right.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's April Hublman. I live at nine Apple Sealing. Um, I'm just curious if you're also just paying as much attention, I realize the numbers are a couple kids less, but at the Sheehan School at the incoming third grade, um, I don't know of the homes being sold and how many, you know, if there's gonna be any more, um, children, but, um, the numbers are just about the same as they are at Martha Jones, and there are three classes, so I'm just wondering if you're keeping a close eye on that as well?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I just, I mean, there's all this Martha Jones. I just wanna speak up for, I wanna represent.
I like that. Representing Sheehan.
Yes. Hi, I'm Kelly Seprowy. Um, thirty-eight Lakesford Drive. Um, I just wanna discuss, I think, you know, not only do we want the smaller numbers for classroom sizes for the children, but also the teachers. It's just a lot. And it's just, you know, I just wanna throw that out there, just to help support the teachers. And I think you guys do an amazing job, and I know you guys are just as passionate as we are. But I think we have a bigger problem, because if we're gonna just keep doing this yo-yo and this song and dance with these numbers, and they're gonna be fluctuating, I really think you guys need to spend the time and honestly, really think about the next year on how to solve all these problems. I just think like borrowing kids from Hamlin to go to Deerfield, and then switching up another classroom and changing it around, that's just too much. I think you guys have a much bigger problem, and I hope you guys really kind of work on that this summer, or the next coming year with Emily, because I look forward to talking with Emily.
Thank you.
Because I just wanna like, I just think that all this talk, I'm like, I think we just have a bigger problem ahead of us.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to comment. I think that's, well, I guess a few things. I wanted to like look at, again, June, I mean, it's, we're a week to date. Um, so that's one recommendation. We'll see what happens. Like, God knows what happens in the real estate markets. It's like the crisis going up. But there are, I mean, to Kelly's point, I mean, I guess there's a few things. Of course, the guidelines, and I, I don't, we talk about research, but the guidelines, I think, were put in place like, and I think that felt fine, but they were put in place twenty years ago.
so we should take a look in the fall. You know, do they make sense? What are other towns doing? What is research showing? You know, twenty years, that was, Clinton was president, so it's been a little while. Um, so that's one thing I think we should do in the fall. But I think the second thing to this conversation is, you know, yeah, I mean, God, I've only been, I've gone through a few of these myself, my kids. I think longer-term solutions, I know we have to look at capital consolidation, but that's like, you know, that'd be, I'll be in my fifties by then. But, so I think, you know, so the other thing, you know, we talked last time about buffers, there's other things we can look at. We should, I don't know what the answer is, but we should look at, you know, other ways, whether or not you have three, four, or five elementary schools, are there other ways we can actually systematically kind of balance this? But we're not going through every year where it's like, you know, sixteen here, twenty-two there. But that's for the fall, we're not going to sell that today. So that would be something I'd like a little bit of insight.
Can I just clarify, so by, just by buffers, I'm talking about certain streets being swing streets, certain areas being swing rights, so.
Yeah, so how's that, how's that going to work? One of the kids at Martha Jones.
Look, I hear he's in, in, uh, the Shins.
No.
Or on other fronts here. I'm just saying, I do.
No, but it's, but, but Donna, I, I agree with you that it's, there's no, there's literally no magical other than rebuilding, reconfiguring.
We can reconfiguration. Nobody wants to do it. We, you know, we can figure it out.
If we discussed though, if we had a third, if we went from five elementary schools to three and had a new one to consolidate three of them, they'd have a lot more flexibility. You know, you get Martha Jones in one in the town, Downey in the other end, the other three, if you consolidate the other three, it's like, you know, that's the way to get more rooms and, you know, there's more rooms.
Even if you, even if you went to four and did reconfiguration, you know, K to two, three, something like that. There's a million options, but the thing is, that, that raises all kinds of other passions and emotions.
Change your configuration, and then you don't have to answer those problems, because that, that just solves all.
Right. There's never going to be a silver bullet that's going to please everyone. There are options, but, and those are what we'll have to discuss.
These committees should start taking some cards and taking a hard look at the issues. That's my suggestion. That's what I was elected to do.
But that's why.
I don't think anybody deserves to say that. I'm going to do that already.
But we're not looking at issues, I think that's what we're doing.
I think that's exactly what we're, we're doing, and I'm able to, again, as.
Hopefully John can give us advice next year, because he's going to a school system.
I'm going to be looking for a law.
The size of Westwood, the same kind of town, they have two elementary schools, two, so, I mean, that's an extreme, one end. But what, what's better? What can you do better with fewer schools, with numbers like these, when you can, you have the flexibility? That's an issue that we need to learn about.
Yes. Hi, I'm Susie Orsillo, seventy-nine LeBree Road. Um, first of all, I just want to speak as a parent whose son is currently in fourth, but was, he was part of the class, the incoming third grade class, that had an extra class added on. I feel that for, for my son, two years ago when we did that, especially in the year where it was his first year taking MCAS and that kind of testing, the smaller class size did make a big difference, um, in my opinion. I just wanted to share that. One other thing that I want to, for the parents who are here from Martha Jones with, um, students who are going into the incoming third grade class, one more thing that we just ask that you guys keep on your radar, with the class size, not only does it affect teachers, but with the three kindergarten classes and the three grade-two classes for next year, there's a real concern about the physical demand that's going to put in terms of, of, on the school if we do need to add another third grade class. So we'd like you all to be aware of that. And we have other questions, for instance, if we do have to add another third grade class, hopefully if we are able to do that, um, if it's something like where it's going to be art on the cart or something like that, do we have any input on whether, you know, you guys, we're going to present you with the possibility of a new third grade class, that this is, that these are the changes that are something that we need to be, what we need to be flexible with? Do you ask any, any input at that point either?
Sure. We always welcome your input. Yeah, I don't know what the actual decision-making treatment.
I think you're.
So, 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 I mean, typically, those decisions are made at the school level in terms of spacing classrooms and stuff like that. I don't think that, um, I could be wrong, but the school committee usually doesn't decide like whether you want music on the cart or art on the cart.
Right, that we.
Um, and so those are things I, we, every year I'm begging people to get on the sc, uh, school site council. It's always a hassle. Um, that's one, to get people on that. So if, um, that's one place, the school site council is, you know, usually three or four parents and three or four teachers, and we meet two or three times a year, and this is something that we might talk about there. Um, or at least get input. And for those of you who know me, I always have an open-door policy, so I certainly welcome any type of input. But we are pretty limited. We are limited in space, but there were three classes at every grade level at one point at Martha Jones, and it does mean things like the music room and the art room, and those are things to take into consideration. And, and because that impacts every student K to five, um, and, and so there are certainly things to look at. It's not as easy as it seems. Or sometimes it's combined classes, like the K-one at Deerfield, and do we look at combining classes? So, so there are different options that we could consider, um, and all of those things get put on the table.
Hi, Jimmy, I'm right, I just have a request. As you go forward and all of this, can you help us understand more the economics of adding a teacher? Because we talk about it, but I'm not really sure, or any of us maybe are sure, of really what it means from a cost perspective. So, you know, adding aides, adding a teacher, you know, what really is the differential? And what is the size for every teacher that we add or keep? What does it mean from a budget perspective? Because that's unclear in this conversation. So I think as you explore it, it would be helpful for us as residents to see what it means. That's all, just a question.
That's a good, that's a great point. Uh, so, just on average, I would say sixty thousand dollars is a good number. We actually do have one remaining unallocated position in the budget, because we have lower than, ironically, lower numbers than Sheehan. We actually have three kindergarten classes, two, so it will be, theoretically, it would be cost-neutral at this, to address one, one issue. Yeah.
What about aides? How much are aides?
Twenty-four thousand or so. But, you know, bear in mind too, I, I'm, that's just the school cost, I mean, when you start including benefits and.
Right, right.
The cost, that's, it's, you know, personnel's expensive for me.
So if you were to include two aides, one in each class, that'd go up to higher than I would have taken. Well, that's what I think should be part of the task, what you look at.
And that's my finite resources point, right? I mean, it's not properly money, it's material money, so, yeah.
So, what I want to do with this time, there is another opportunity for public participation at the end of, um, our agenda. So I'd like to continue with our agenda at this point, and if you'd like to stay with more questions, feel free to do so. And if you'd like to leave, um, make sure you go down to the all-night grad party prep room, because they need some painters and some glues. So go down to the cafeteria and help out, okay?
Thanks.
All right. Two minutes for it.
See ya, thanks.
I probably forgot to say that for a second, because I find it a bit.
Yes.
Are you sure? Oh. Oh, yeah. You know, part. I'd like to see you all, because my first time trying to be. I have to do my. Okay, well, if you want to come, they're welcome. It's kind of like three, four hours, you know what I mean? My first time trying to. We need a drink. So. Well, it's. I think it's. Maybe I'll. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I want to go to this.
I'm, I'm. I'm. Sorry. Yeah. I have. I'm. 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 It's definitely. So. I just. Well. Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah. Hi. I'm. Yeah. Right. I think it never. I don't. Sorry. I think. And then. It's actually, you know. Like, angry, but it's. I. I. Yeah. Do you? Yeah. Well. But. First. You think it was still money? No, and they have. Oh, man. And then. Yeah. You want anything else to do? They don't want to be, you know. Sweet. Yeah. Why don't we just. Who's streets are like, no, not high street. Yeah. 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 It is a great way. And. We're. Yeah. Always. She's, she's not. Yeah. So now. So. I guess we have to leave. Yes. Are you sorry, you like? Yeah. Kind of. I know. Got to. About. Yeah. Still the perfect. I'm. I'm. Thank you. Yes. And, you know. You're. Yeah. Can you be a process? I know. If. Yeah, I will. Yeah. Yeah. Why do you? My mother. Yeah. I think. But. Yeah. Yeah.
All right, let's get started. We're going to go.
All right. We're not here. Please.
Okay, we're going to continue, um. This meeting. Right? Get the show back on the road.
Okay, I am going to introduce, um, Sean Bevan and Joanna Begle, and this has got, I think, an exciting thing, because we talked so much about it in last year's budget cycle, about the addition of, uh, any need, oh, the need for, um, a social worker at Westwood High School, and ultimately, kind of fighting the budget process to get it. And we are really thrilled to be able to not only introduce Joanna Begle, but share with you some of the, I think, success stories for the year and how it's really impacted kids in a positive way. So Sean, that's.
I mean, I first wanted to open by thanking, uh, the school committee for adjusting in this position, because it's something that has shown great, um, great gains this year, and has really given us the opportunity to service families and kids with continuity and with great quality. And so, we were already doing really great service to all of our kids, uh, but this year we, uh, Joanna's position has allowed us to do things that we were, um, uh, that are being done better this year. And that's a combination of the investment of the position, but also Joanna as a person. Joanna has been a specifically skilled individual and has done really great work with us this year. So, basically, to tell you a little bit about that work. So, uh, just going back, uh, in case you forget, the things that we talked about as establishing the, the need for the position for the social worker were really couched in two different areas. Uh, they were broadly responsive to what we were seeing here as localized trends of kids who were increasingly needing hospitalization for, for mental health-related issues. That's, that's an issue that we were seeing here at Westwood High School, but that's also a regional and national trend line that is on the rise. And this was a chance for us here at Westwood High School to respond to the needs of some of our most fragile kids. And so, when I framed this up last year, we talked about, that, uh, that this position would respond to the student-specific needs of those kids that we're talking about. We were meeting those kids' needs last year. We were doing it in a way where lots of different adults were, were finding ways to meet those needs. And now Joanna and her, in her position, is providing continuity in meeting those needs in a singular and monolithic kind of way. And then, in addition, uh, when we framed up these issues, we talked about how this position would allow, uh, would, the person in this position would work with other agencies to expand basically our capacity and improve our services by talking to other agencies and networking with other agencies, uh, in the area and, um, in service of our kids. So, uh, sort of presentation time, we'll talk about those two, two sets of areas, because those are the two areas that we presented to you last year, where we indicated that this was an E. So, uh, the three areas that, that Joanna, Joanna does promote work, and she, she kind of pulled together a little bit of data for me here, is her direct contact with students, which would be counseling and consultation, consultation meetings, consulting with her, uh, the students, adults around them, the parents and the teachers, working with reentry and, uh, reentering hospitalized students, and then also doing some safety assessments. So we're going to kick it over to Joanna, who's going to tell us a little bit about what those look like and what her day-to-day work with these kids is.
Yeah. So, it's hard to do sort of like, what is a typical day in the life of a social worker? But I think this data helps capture sort of how I spend my time, particularly face-to-face, one-on-one with students. So, the counseling and consultation, as you can see, forty-five students, that's forty-five unique students, individual students. Um, and this is a way that I can provide sort of short-term intensive, in-the-moment care to a student who might need something right now. Um, and so that can look like short-term re-counseling, lots of consultation with the administration, with teachers, who are the ones who, um, can highlight a student who might need some additional support. Um, in particular, guidance counselors, who often bring people by-bye and make that introduction. And so, the nice thing about this is I'm available to anybody in need. So, um, whereas a school psychologist might be with students who have, have tons of go-along or IEP, I can really see anyone. So there's tons of flexibility there, and I can be sort of like on-demand as needed. And I think that that flexibility has, has really been helpful for students and staff alike. The reentry and hospitalization is also certainly a large component of the work I do. So this year, I've supported twelve students and their families through that process. And, um, before the student returns to Westwood High School while they're out, um, either in day treatment or inpatient unit, a lot of the work I do is with families, supporting them through that process. I may not have even met the student yet because they're out of school. So, it's a really nice opportunity to help families through that, what can be a very tough, um, frightening, worrisome period, especially for families, this might be their first time accessing a mental health system. And it's really not easy system to have a day-long support. So a lot of work with families at that point, and then when the student comes back, that's when I really have the opportunity to get them in the moment, um, meeting with them daily, helping them through that process, coordinating with some teachers and their guidance counselors. And I'm happy to say that we haven't had a single one of those students get re-hospitalized. So that's a really good sign, to know that the transition is working, and that's what we want, is for them to be stable and to be able to rejoin the community and become a, you know, a regular student again. And then the last part of this is the safety assessment. So this is students who we're worried about them being at risk. Part of the. And so again, in the moment, somebody has alerted me, you know, maybe there was a worrisome piece of writing in an English class, or a student shared something with you at lunch, um, and they come to their, that year, they come to their guidance counselor, I can meet with them that day, and all of a sudden, it's the most important part of my day, to assess, are they safe? Can they be in school? If I'm concerned about risk, what are the next steps? And again, helping the family through that process. And again, helping the family through that process.
Uh, next, we can talk a little bit about, uh, the, the direct student impact that Joanna's had, uh, by providing this program that kids would recognize and will hopefully recognize these kind of things as things that Joanna has had a direct impact with kids. It might not be face-to-face, one-on-one, but would be in front of a group of kids. She can tell a little bit about that. And some of these, at least, um, the second, like the lounge is something that she, it's been developed on her own and has launched without being asked from the system. So tell us a little bit about the stress management group that she created you, these other two areas too.
Yep, so some of these are self-explanatory. Stress management group is what you would think it is. And that's a collaboration with Youth and Family Services at, uh, Sierra Valley School. Um, and that is a group available to students over the course of the year who are dealing with stress and teaching them skills, manage stress. The lounge, um, really came about organically as a result of my meeting with students and hearing about things that are different. And what I heard, kind of, kind of again, is that there's a lot of students where lunch is just really the toughest, most painful part of their day. Going to the cap, dealing with that sort of unstructured time, the social time, it was really difficult. So I created an alternative lunch space in the building, which I called the lounge, trying to make it sound a little fun and relaxing, um, where they can come, I'm there. We have games, it's a very relaxed setting. Some students wanna just come and, and listen to music and have some quiet time to decompress. Other students really like to come and engage with me or engage with another student there, play games, um...
Roughly, how many kids do you have on a given day?
It's, it's a pretty small group. Interestingly, the, the students that I really want to come, it's hard for them to come because I'm asking them to sort of put themselves out there in a way, like they, they kind of maybe are like the loner kids or they're used to really just sort of like finding a classroom and kind of hiding out during lunch. And so I'm asking them to come into a social space, um, and that's a big ask for a lot of these students. So on a, on a good day, we might have like four, and sometimes it might be one. But for those students, I think it's really powerful. So even though the number is small, I think it's sort of like a godsend to have to have this opportunity and the space to go to.
Is it limited to only those kids that you've identified as...
So what we did is we, I, I sort of pulled the guidance counselors and actually the entire staff, I sent a whole staff email and said, "I'm doing this initiative. I need your help to identify students that you think would really benefit from this. Who comes to mind? Who's that kid that stays behind during lunch and doesn't go to class?" You know, things like that. So they gave me names and I have like a list that I send out and every week, I, I run it twice a cycle. I, those kids get an email from me, "Hey, it's a lounge day, I'd love to see you. You're welcome to bring a friend if they want, if that makes it easier." Um, and so I, I don't get a hit on every one of them, but I keep trying. And I feel like I seek to walk by, sort of like scan the park. They're like, "Oh, there it is." And like, maybe next year they'll feel ready to try it. And signs of suicide, of course, is a program you all are familiar with. And I sort of became the point person this year to really spearhead that and make sure everything went smoothly and efficiently.
Yeah, and so you may recall, we did, uh, an analysis, uh, two years ago of, uh, quality program. We were going to deal with, uh, students' mental health needs. And we really enjoyed what we're doing, we're doing well, what grades, different programming was, was, uh, being provided to kids. And we determined where our weaknesses were. One of the weaknesses we identified was that, uh, in the ninth grade, our students were getting sense of suicide programming. They weren't getting the most, the fullest experience of sense of suicide programming, which would include a screening tool at the end to ask the questions that, that might, uh, have provided with an opportunity to identify that they earned gains in time. So, uh, two years ago, we implemented this full implementation. It was challenging and new, uh, and this year we did it for a second time. This is the first year we had the help of a social worker. And Joanna spearheaded this point person from, from September all the way through to the implementation, which I think was important. And it was very successful, it, it, it involved having twelve urgent classrooms of, of students, two adults in each, who can train and, uh, try to work with, um, all those, uh, adults and having a sense of suicide programming, which I, you know, you all know is a critical, uh, to, to meeting this need, was implemented smoothly, seamlessly, and got a lot of good data and back evidence. So in addition to sense of suicide, Joanna is also on the child study team. That's the deal of, uh, of adults, key adults in the building that meet once a week, to look over, uh, student data on achievement, attendance, discipline, all the kinds of things you might imagine to try to identify students who are struggling before they're struggling vitally and to try to implement some strategies for them to, um, to improve their, the things that they're working with. Joanna's been a member of that team this year, joined us this year, and has been a critical component of that, of that team. Also on the incident management team, that's the, the group of people who get together when something happens, there's an off-threat, or there's a, there's something, some other really unpredictable, a major event that requires the, the quick nimble thinking of, uh, of the team, the, the, the adults, uh, in the building. And then she's a member of what we call the, I mean, quality portion, it's a group of advisors of several of our, our clubs that work with, some of our, um, populations that, uh, that are working closely together this year on, on all kinds of different topics, like, um, Asian Alliance, the Amnesty International, and a variety of other clubs. She's been working with that group, uh, and stuff. And then there's the second, the second part of the job, which we talked about, is inter-agency collaboration. And she's gonna talk a little bit about that and illustrate for you guys what that is.
Sure, so, um, you know, work with people in the community and also having residents be aware of what are resources in communities are really a part of any social worker job, and especially as a school social worker. So, um, I actually used to be on staff at Westwood Youth and Family Services, so I'm very familiar with them, love them. Um, and we continue to work together closely. And I think that that has, um, created a really nice, they were already a, a great partner with the school, but it's just so nice to be able to continue to collaborate with them and work with them. And they help support stress management group and do other things like that. And then, uh, school, the town is very generously funded through our place referral service, which is the, the service that allows anyone in town to call up the help line and get help accessing mental health support, which again, it's sort of like a minefield out there, trying to navigate this world and understand insurance and how this is all work and there's wait lists. And so that has been a really valuable resource for the last few years. I've gotten lots of positive feedback directly from families about how that rules when I need that recommendation. So just good for you all to know that people are using it and finding it very useful. And then if, if, uh, families need, are connected to TCF or, or we have to outreach through TCF, then that's what I do, Riverside Community Care is a local crisis, um, group in the area. And again, helping families navigate that if a student feels, since they have their phases, whether they need to come to school for evaluation or I recommend they go to their office, helping families navigate. And then Simmons is where I got my MSOU. And so I'll be working with them closely next year. I have a second-year MSOU candidate coming on from the School of Social Work to be an intern. And so I'm really excited about her. And, you know, she's just gonna sort of like expand the bandwidth as possible, um, help me work on even more things that I've been thinking about this year.
So if that works out, then that could be a program ongoing where we would have a...
Sure, and that's what the Simmons would like, right? They want you to be a field placement and have it be a good partnership. Um, and, and that, you know, I'm a good supervisor and I get great students and, you know, it's sort of a co-contribution. Um, and as a placement and a clinical social worker, I can supervise students and it's really part of being a social worker, sort of giving back to those emerging social workers in the field and supporting comments they grow.
So I want to take this as an opportunity to maybe illustrate for you what this position, how, how it's been working. And, uh, many of you were aware, we had a speaker come in, uh, last Friday. His name's Chris Herron, he's a basketball star and is a very powerful public speaker on the dangers of drug use. We had him in in two thousand and thirteen and his, his presentation was so powerful, it really just surfaced to many kids who needed a lot of help and support in such a way that we spent the whole rest of that week frankly, just trying to respond to the needs that these kids were putting. And it was, we were not prepared for this enough. We'd never seen that response from the student, student audience after a, after a single speaker. So we had Chris Herron back last Friday and predicting that the, the response might be similar, um, to that. We had work, uh, join us up forward and she, uh, worked with Amy Davenport, a volunteer, uh, the youth students, this is what we're saying. And they developed, um, some guidelines for teachers to lead conversations following the Chris Herron's, um, event. Joanna contributed to the development of these talking points that were really responsive to what we thought kids needed. She conducted a training with the teachers at a, a, a meeting last morning, right before Chris Herron. Went into that Chris Herron event, being able to know that after that event, you're gonna carve out some time for kids to go back into their classrooms and have these conversations using talking points developed by Joanna, these other individuals. And then once they did that, Chris Herron completed his, uh, his, his talk, and kids went back into this structured environment, helped, with Joanna's help. And then also unknowing kids properly, we had Westwood Youth and Family Services staff on site and weren't planning to be there, but kind of pushed out and expanded the bandwidth which she said to absorb the, the kind of energy that kids were bringing after Chris's spoke. And that day went off really well. Kids went back into their classrooms, they had structured conversations. We were not overwhelmed to guide this with kids who, who were not prepared to, to deal with all of that, I think, went off because we went ahead, just applied this level of, uh, of service that we just frankly didn't, didn't have before, um, and didn't invest with before, and, and it worked out beautifully and they got the props and everything. So it's just like an illustration of one event, we have many events over the course of the year, speaker events and whatnot. And that was just one moment that just kind of illustrates our service to kids and families and group by the issuance of the position. That's a lot of information, um, and so I don't know if one of those...
First of all, I want to say it was worth fighting last year for this position. We're very happy. All the blood it got spent, uh, thank you very much for what you've done. But my first question is, would be, uh, do we need another person like you? It seems like, I don't know how you can even keep track of all of this, number one. Would the work you're doing be battleable in the middle school or is that too early? And, and what are some of the stressed things you've been able to find and, and help kids with? I mean, we hear all the kids have stress and, you know, what, what can be done and, and what's causing it?
Questions. What I, can I feel the...
Well, don't worry about it.
Can I feel the first part right now? One of the things that we have talked about is, is a need for somebody who almost is an academic supplement to the work that Joanna's doing, which is somebody who helps a kid not only socially emotionally, but when they come back and they miss some time after school, uh, for let's say a hospitalization due to mental health. And they went into that hospitalization because they were so fragile and struggling. And now they resume classes after having missed some speed, or two weeks of classes, and they're not there, they're not up to speed currently. And now they're trying to get caught back up, stay on top of the work that's currently happening. A lot of schools will, will have somebody who will help manage that, that will communicate with, with teachers, help reduce the amount of work they're, they're, um, they're, they're doing or expecting to do probably identify essential assignments and eliminate the assignments that might, sort of hold off on assignments.
Can the teacher do that on his own? I mean, doesn't the teacher realize the students out there?
Oh yeah, no, we're already doing this work, uh, but it's being done not necessarily with a single person who might have a single space where that person can drop in and have somebody who knows where they've been, what their issues have been, who their English teacher is, what that paper has been. And so the English teacher knows the papers are due, he knows that they've been out. And that teacher is usually communicating that with, uh, his counselor, sure. So that would be kind of a, a, a next possible investment and I think a need at some point, um, that's what I...
Before it's next, you know, the budget next time to really close it.
Something to think about, um, and it's something that some schools do as a transition, we call it a transition. And then, I don't know if you have any speculations around, on what has contributed to such a rise?
Well, I think it's a complicated question, you know, it's hard to sort of simplify it. I think, um, mental health is a much more comfortable time for people now. So I think things are more out in the open than it used to be. So families and students are more comfortably acknowledging the struggles that they might have and then using the resources around them to sort of support them. I think it's also, this is a high achievement district with students who really care about their education, who really wanna do well, they're all thinking about their future. And for some of them, that's just a lot of pressure, you know? And so for some of them, they don't have quite the resilience or the coping skills to manage all of that. And they need help to gain in those skills, practicing those skills. The students that I work with, you know, it, it, they're more than just like a little stressed out. You know, guidance counselors can kind of help students through that kind of process. When I'm working with students who really have more mental health issues, anxiety, depression, eating disorders, um, dementia, sort of suicidal ideation, things like that.
Are other school districts dealing with that issue?
Absolutely, this is, this is across the Commonwealth. This is not unique to Westwood. This is a very typical, I think, picture sadly, of, of sort of what it's like to be an adolescent in these days. And I think it's just more talked about because if there's less of it, I'm associated with it. So people will talk about having diabetes, right? And now I think they're more willing to say, and they also have depression. And so people have to come along with these. And so now we're just sort of working to support them now that they've had that creative stop to, to sort of acknowledge that.
I mean, it's hard to put a number on this, but I remember last year it was something like twenty-plus hospitalization. It seems like it's lower this year. I mean, maybe just talk to, you think, I mean, it's hard to know exactly, but do you think some of the things you've done to help prevent, you know, that you've done to help prevent that or you're spending the rehospitalization, so there haven't been any of those?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly like to think so.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah.
But, um, we haven't seen a rehospitalization, which I think is sort of a hard number to count. And I think that having my position has allowed us to get ahead of some things before a student has really, really hit crisis or before their only option is to sort of be supported through the FLEX program, right? On kind of this intermediate step. And I think that that's really powerful. And, and so I think that that has helped keep the others down.
That's great. We are seeing a reduction, I think, we'll wait to appreciate that. I don't wanna make sense, but the numbers are looking pretty good and we're really happy about that. And aside of the numbers, the number of rehospitalizations has been really...
Do you know what it was last year, the rehospitalization?
Um, I don't know the rehospitalizations number. I think we had twenty-eight in the middle school this year, rehospitalized, something like that. And then I don't know what our number is, but it's coming into the finish line. Well, I think it's good for happiness.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, so we, we're gonna do your best.
All right, so now we update on signs of suicide curriculum at the Thursday Middle School. Sorry, it's so late. Try to stick to schedule a little bit.
So I'm, uh, joined this evening by Kelsey, who's one of our guidance counselors. And, uh, just to quickly answer Charles' question about position at middle school, um, we have a kind of analogous position. We have, in addition to our two guidance counselors, we have an adjustment counselor who has, um, a little more of a clinical role. So, and the referral stream works in a similar way, so students, that would be great, in a similar way. So students, uh, might start with their guidance counselor, but there needs to appear more ceiling again, you know, preferring to, uh, be a... Um, so I'm gonna do the first slide, I'm gonna hand it over to Kelsey, who's kind of the person who is involved in some of the teaching aspect of the program. And then, uh, I'll, I'll be... So I'm not gonna do as comprehensive an overview as I've done the past about this particular program, uh, street and dental health and general adolescent support, just because we've done that. But, actually, this is really an update, just a topic. Uh, so I'll give you a brief bit of background, uh, and then we'll give you a snapshot of the year, sort of the context of this particular year's program. Plus, we're gonna talk about classroom strategies and also some of the results and feedback we got from SUSE. And then, uh, we'll talk about some of the steps, where we go next. First of all, SOS has been at the middle school for a number of years. We actually started, um, looking into it and using some of the language and some of the concepts from SOS back from the two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen school year through our health curriculum at that time. The health just started sort of introducing some of these ideas. And there was some talk with our, um, wellness coordinator, K12, about maybe bringing this program on. Now, as you're aware, the following fall, we actually had students suicide that at the middle school. And in that context, the kind of need to look at this became even more heightened. Um, one of the things we heard from the folks who supported us in that time, which was a very difficult time, was that students who have lost a peer, classmates have a peer, are even more vulnerable than other students. And that, um, there was some real need to kind of look at that cohort of kids, follow them carefully and track them. So when we really started implementing fully was in the spring of twenty fifteen. We chose signs of suicide just because, first of all, the high school was using the program in part. They weren't doing a full implementation of screening yet, but they were using the basic curriculum. Uh, a, a number of other school districts in the area that we like to prepare ourselves to were also using signs of suicide. It's one of several programs that are out there, but it's one that's highly respected. And in fact, there's some nice research about it, it dates back to two thousand and seven, but there's, um, some quantitative work, they did a study in multiple states of over four thousand students and basically found some really nice results where compared to a controlled group, um, there were fewer attempts and more, um, fewer reported attempts between these two groups of students. And, um, just sort of more positive and sort of helpful attitudes about the topics of depression, like suicidality, uh, among students when they have children. Uh the folks who teach this program at the middle school are not our typical teachers. Uh we really wanted the people who have a kind of background in the universe of mental health. So our guidance counselors, our adjustment counselors, school psychologists, our school nurse, uh Joanna joined us this year, I think, um which was fantastic, which she. Um so she'll have to recruit if we need an extra person, um and she's familiar with some of our students through some program and she's known with us in the past. And those folks are paired up with homeroom teachers, so the program is implemented in homeroom in seventh grade. We chose seventh grade very specifically when we sort of set out to bring this program at a moment in the middle school. And it really is because the seventh grade year is, I think, in some ways, the most challenging year of the middle school. S- sounds like a little crazy, uh it's probably like that when you were there. But I can tell you, if you go almost any middle school administrator throughout the Commonwealth, they're gonna tell you, the people in the middle of the middle, that's when that's when things get hard. Um and it's not the fun and excitement of sixth grade, it's not brand new. And you don't have sort of one foot out looking at the high school and feeling really big and and talking, you know, eighth grade. So they're they're sort of a little bit finding their way. In addition, they are also at a point where the academic expectations start to rank up. Uh social world becomes much more complicated and in this day and age of sort of social media, social networking, uh that's added a whole other layer of sort of stress for our kids. So it's our seventh grade students in homeroom groups taught by our mental health staff and they are paired with homeroom teachers, who are folks who really know each group of kids. So these guys do the main instruction, but the homeroom teachers are there to kind of help and support. Um the actual lesson is not, it's not a huge curriculum. It really is something that we provide background to during our health classes and our health units. But then, this curriculum itself is really a one day sort of intensive program. Um we run it for the day, we do the screening and and that's kind of how it how it works and that's how it's implemented in other places as well. Um one thing to note about the screening, um when we decided to do this, there was a lot of discussion and debate about that screening tool. Uh the screening itself, it's a little alarming, I think, you know, John was at the table, we were looking at this and trying to decide. And I actually included a copy for you in the packet, it um it's a standard instrument that gets used. And it asks these very direct questions, like have you thought about home room? Which I think is unnerving. And we heard loud and clear from the experts in the field, in the field, that to do a curriculum like this and then not screen kids was not a great idea. They felt like if you raise the topics, if you teach kids strategies, but you don't ask them the questions, then you're kind of leaving them somewhat vulnerable, I suppose. Um in addition, when we talked to other schools who had done the screening, because we were worried, worried about doing that, so they seemed very small, surprising. Every single school that we talked to had positive things to say. And the compelling thing that every single school had to say was, we found students that we didn't know were struggling. This tool helped us and it helped us help families. And that was really good, that kind of won the day, you know, and so worried as we thought about it. So that's a little bit about background and implementation. This year, we faced some interesting challenges. Our health curriculum changed this year in terms of how we implement. So we moved health, which used to be a little bit in sixth grade, a little bit in seventh grade, a little bit in eighth grade. We moved the bulk of our health instruction into sixth grade, we're sort of frontloading it at the beginning of the middle school. Um and there's some reasons for that, but one big reason was we're trying to kind of find some space and time for computer science. Uh we also felt like there's some topics we wanna get to early, whereas seeing our kids being more involved with social media, kind of younger and older age, we want to get to address those issues early. And there's also some cool research about things like career exploration being very powerful with younger kids and that health education has a chance to do that. Unfortunately, we felt like some of the topics are a little advanced for sixth graders. We didn't wanna dive into mental health with our sixth graders. So what we did this year is we basically tried to jam some of the health units into PE in seventh and eighth grade. I'm gonna say, not as successful as we'd like. Uh we don't think the model is actually the problem, I think it's a little bit about the scheduling. So uh students in the middle school, a typical student has ninety days of PE instruction, which is a lot. They had to spend about ten days and students were coming out of PE for a short section, another PE class, and meeting with the health teacher during that time. We're gonna change things up a little bit because one thing we found out is even though these are important topics and kids didn't seem to mind the topics, they really minded being pulled out of PE during the try alternate, during team handball. There's something about time and you're, these are big enough.
That's best times of the year.
Very, very important, I mean, so some kids didn't mind at all, but a few kids are, they were very passionate about this. So we're working on uh implementation for next year so that the the classes kind of line up and the health, the PE teachers are gonna be part of the the team of people who do this, the kind of background information and health. Um so all of our students prior to doing the SOS curriculum had some background in their health education class about mental health. So they weren't walking in to a suicide program with no background information at all. Um in addition, we sent out a parent notification, included that, um and ran an information session for parents. One thing we've made a decision to do with this curriculum is it is a, an active opt-in. Some districts run this as an opt-out, which means parents might receive a permission slip and you have to return something saying no. We really felt like it's important to give parents and families some decision-making power on this and to keep people fully informed. So everybody has to return the permission slip to actively opt-in. Um and a- and I really think for some kids and families, they feel like they wanna tackle this a different way. And there might be certain circumstances for those kids, for those families, where tackling this at school is just not appropriate.
What, so what was the, the outcome, did you get from this?
Participation rate was very high, we had ninety three percent of questions. So um you don't struggle with participation, so I feel like it's a good start. Um we do send out a letter directly to students as well, um and that's something we did from year one that um uh in interestingly, working with whoever's side of the folks there, they hadn't seen the district do before and felt like it was important and powerful and helpful. Just tells the students, here's what to expect, um it gives them a little bit of kind of a sense of uh what's coming down the pipe. And then, finally, this year, I also sent out a follow-up letter just reflecting back a little bit of imminently kind of what we saw from kids. Um so that's a little context. I'm gonna hand it off to Kelsey there.
Okay, why is this?
Okay, great.
Hi, thank you guys for having me, um I'll be quick because I know it's been a long meeting. But I'm here to talk a little bit about how do we actually teach this. And um I'm just one person that teaches this program, so I wanna give a lot of credit to my colleagues. Um put forth a lot of time and a lot of energy into, let's not just turn on a video about suicide prevention and sit down and let the kids watch it and then give them a paper afterwards, you know, that doesn't seem responsible, it doesn't seem effective. So we really um went through as a team and developed a really comprehensive lesson plan. We have a common script on how we introduce the topics to students, how we give them, um you know, we acknowledge that it's a really difficult topic to talk about, that for some people there might be personal connections, for others, they haven't heard about it before, but it could just be something that's, you know, uncomfortable or just new. So we acknowledge that with kids and explain to them how they're gonna be able to access if they need help during the session, if they're feeling uncomfortable, if they need to take a break. That actually hasn't happened very frequently since our first year running the program. Um but I think it's important to let the kids know that, so that if they are feeling a little uncomfortable or have a question or need some time, you know, one-on-one with an adult, that that's, we have that type of support available to them. So we introduced the topic, um it does contain a video that's about nineteen minutes long. We paused the video at least three or four times. So during the um during the lesson, we actually had students work in small groups or pairs. And we have them sit with people that they know, that they feel comfortable with, and we sort of say, you know, part of this is we are gonna watch a video, but we're also gonna ask you guys for feedback, we're gonna ask questions. And we give them these nice little handy whiteboards, which seems like a small thing. But when kids are working in groups, we found especially at this developmental age, just asking an open-ended question and then waiting for responses is sometimes quickens, right? But if you ask an open-ended question like, what comes to mind when we say the word depression? Talk about it with your partner, write everything down together. They fill the whiteboards. And I have to give a lot of credit also to um to Chrissy Wumble, our health teacher, because students really did have a lot of knowledge when we asked that question, accurate, correct knowledge about what depression is, what symptoms of depression are. So that was true. So that's kind of how we start off, but that's just so you know, that's sort of the teaching strategy. Um and we'll stop multiple times during the video to ask questions, talk about it with your group, write it down on your whiteboard. That way, kids that don't necessarily wanna say aloud, they can hold up their board. And we can read it for them. So there's a lot of different ways that this works. Um at the end of the video, we do implement the screening tool. And uh it it we explain it to the kids that it's a chance for them to give us some feedback about the program, about how did they went. Also, it's a chance for us to check and ask them to check kind of with themselves and see how they're doing. And answer some questions about their own mental health.
So it's feedback about what did they count it, what kind of questions do they have?
So we ask.
Effective, you have?
Yeah, we ask them things, well, first, we ask them to um identify a trusted adult inside of school, outside of school, because that's a really big part of the video. I should go back a little. So one of the main things that um the SOS program teaches the students is an acronym called ACT, which is, once you are aware of something that's going on with yourself or a friend, we're asking you to act. And that is acknowledge, care, and tell. So acknowledge that your friend has a problem and that it's serious. Care, show them that you care about them. And tell is tell a trusted adult. So part of the feedback that we ask them for, who are trusted adults in your life? We ask them honestly, what did you think of the program? How did you think it went? What do you think could go better? Do you have any questions about today's program? Things like that. And then, we also do use the the screen.
Do we have many of the students approach the teacher, you know, their adult, to tell you that their classmate is having problems?
Absolutely, yeah. And we've seen a real increase in this since joining the program, with kids letting us know and letting us know without classmates and friends. That's been a huge tool. That's part of why the SOS program has been shown to be so effective, is because kids talk to kids, right? Kids talk to other kids, not necessarily to adults. So teaching them that we're asking you to look out for each other and know when it is something, you know, what is a sign, a sign that something could be really wrong here, when you need to tell a trusted adult. So absolutely, we've seen a huge, huge increase in that. I mean, and kids being confident and knowing, after I've done this program, I knew that this was something I needed to come and tell you about, or I need to tell my mom about. And at the very end, um we do, you know, we do give kids a chance to kind of decompress after this program. It's it's kind of a lot, although they really handle it very nicely, they did an excellent job. Um so we give them some chance to do like mindful coloring or, you know, kind of relaxation activities at the end. We're also there in the rooms, if they wanna come up to us privately and ask a question or just give some feedback, um so they did, they do a really nice job. So the good news, ninety eight percent of students this year identified one or more trusted adults at school. Fifty-four were able to identify multiple people they could go to at school. Forty-two percent named a current teacher. And that's interesting because it's nice to know that people have made connections with their current teachers, but knowing also that many kids hang on to connections that they've made in different ways, from either a former teacher, a counselor, a coach. And we really try to um promote that within the school, that it's tell any trusted adult.
Do they actually, I mean, that, it's confidential, do they actually write a name?
They do.
Okay.
Yeah, they do.
What do you do for those two percent of kids who don't have someone?
So we do follow up with them. And we um, so that's part of our follow-up, any kids that say that they don't have an identified trusted adult, either in school or out of school or either one, we do follow up with them and try to.
And are they receptive to it?
Mostly, mostly they are. Say, one this year was not very receptive, it was, you know, kind of like, no, I wouldn't tell people here at school, but I would tell my mom, at home. Okay, you know? So some kids, you know, have a privacy, they're also quite literal, you know? And then ninety-nine percent identified one or more trusted adults, although that's. Um I have also a little more good news to share. I just did a um a last, our last unit with the seventh graders today and gave them kind of a post survey after all of these lessons that we've done, including SOS. And two hundred and thirty out of the two hundred and forty-four who completed their survey today were able to accurately identify the steps in ACT. Acknowledge, care, and tell. So they were able to retain that. They had difficulty spelling acknowledge and segue. So I said, that's okay, spelling doesn't count, I think I'll know what you mean. And then, for our screening facts, um just so you know, the screening tool is a standard instrument that's used. Um so this year, following the screening forums, our team total met with about thirty students. We meet with kids for a variety of reasons. So the number one thing, of course, we look at is our actual criteria for a few screen, which means you answer, I think it's three or more of the questions that are asking about symptoms of depression. Or if they answer any single question, yes, that is asking directly about suicide. A lot of killing themselves or having tried to. Um those students are students that we absolutely meet with and we need to be following the program. Other students that we meet with are, there there's a little box that says, would you like to talk to somebody about today's program? Yes or no? Any kid that checks yes, sure, we meet with them. Um and then anybody that has sort of interesting comments or interesting feedback, you know, we meet with students as well. We try to really emphasize this with kids, that we are gonna be meeting with people throughout the day, following the program, to see what their feedback is around the program. That's kind of how we frame it, so that hopefully students aren't thinking, oh, anybody that has stupid, you know, someone has, you know, some sort of huge problem. Because of course, kids don't worry about that. Um and we always call home after each student does meet as a follow-up to parents. That day, that's the day. Okay?
Just wanted to share with you some of the direct feedback we got from students. So these are actual student quotes and all that, right? Um and they're kind of all a little out, this is some of the things that we've heard, um you know, everything from the really positive and like, what we groups. This was helpful to, this was very sad, I suppose it is. You know, some more recommendation-oriented feedback we got, we're things like this, but it doesn't show up like that. A few students, the the video, which I do screen for parents ahead of time, is is it's it's kind of awkward and hokey and I think the kids see that. And our staff are good about acknowledging that. Um the folks who made the video and the research behind it basically says, part of that is because it makes it very concrete and clear and it's actually important developmentally for middle school. Um but I like that, the idea that, you know, we wanna have a little more open and talk. Uh you know, more student comment, maybe it should be grade six. Um we have more general comments about sort of life and stress in school. Um and interesting, we should do more assemblies, more big, uh small things.
The last one, yeah, like after us.
So that is really interesting and that's led to some real discussion when we talk about the follow-up and I don't understand. So one uh thing we really looked at this year is we noticed this screening tool, which is, I think, the same one used at the high school levels of the city.
Yeah.
Um it's not with the language in it, just kind of confusing to younger kids. Um and some of our more concrete kids were answering things in a way where when we did the follow-up, uh we kind of determined they didn't really mean to say what they said because it was just the way the question was phrased. Now, this is a research-based tool, we don't know what other options are out there, but we think we're gonna look around and see if there's something that maybe is pitched more directly to middle school kids like the FLEX. Um so that's one step we're gonna take. Um and another step, and this is really important, we do feel like no matter how we frame it, no matter how hard we try, kids are gonna read into, if I get called to the counselor, it means there's something wrong with me. Um this is a tough enough department because it's really important that we do follow up with the kids, especially if there's something that's a safe concern. Um different school systems have done different things. NADIS has something really interesting going on where they partnered with a program at Wellesley College where folks that are researchers at Wellesley are actually making individual phone calls to kids, you know, so they're connecting with them via phone, those are high school kids. And part of that is because they just started at high school, it's a little easier to get to them in the office.
So they feeling badly because they're being called down to the council's office or is it because other people are aware of them?
I think it's partly, whether they're aware of it or not, the thing about middle schools, everybody thinks that they're crazy or whatever, so yes. You know, I think our folks try to be subtle, regardless of how subtly they're making it.
In the sense of.
Yeah.
Everybody's looking at them.
There's nothing that comes out to sound, no matter how much they're. But I think we're gonna kind of keep tinkering with that. Um you know, we've talked about sort of relay systems and other ways to come at it, but
Yeah.
some sometimes we really feel like there isn't much of a choice, if this two writes down, you know, I've thought about this or I've tried to do it, we gotta get to that. Yeah. Um you know, the other thing is thinking about sort of ongoing initiatives that are really designed to be prevention-oriented and support wellbeing and. So wellbeing prevention is primarily called in our health classes and through our guidance counselors and some of the classes they work at. And, you know, our advisory is designed to do this and we're working on that, we're just sort of in the middle of collecting sort of end-of-year student feedback and looking at how to refine that. And so far, what the feedback is telling us is. And so far, what the feedback is telling us is the programs work well on the kind of connectedness and relationship oriented. Not, not as well on the kind of goal-setting and problem-solving end, so we just want to do on the curriculum and with that. Um, and then the other thing is just tackling some of the concerns that are identified. Um, we've kind of psychologically gone through dealing with worry about homework load. We tackled it a few years ago very explicitly. Um, didn't really tackle it as explicitly this year, but it's starting to crop up again, particularly in our eighth grade this year. So it's starting to surface as more of a concern. And we've got it on the radar, so I think we can tackle it, we'll be in the, that's what we're hoping for next year. That's the quick snapshot, come on, so if you have questions.
Really good, very adept expectation, yeah.
And, but like I said, the letters are very, I mean, we know, um, if you have any questions, we know. It's called, I'll certainly remember that they're in.
Thank you. Okay, um, moving on to our next item, um, the policy review. This is the second reading of the Narcan, um, policy. Everybody look at, can we read the reading and, and, uh, just, we'll go down.
Can we wave if, I think so, yeah.
Does anybody, um.
Yeah, it's a note, it's got.
No, we'll wave.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion on that? Okay, so, um.
You said, we're reading the third reading.
We're waving the third reading.
Just adopting the policy.
And we're adopting the policy. We, we all clear on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so all in favor? Okay, all are in favor? Excellent, excellent.
Good.
Thank you for this meeting, your students.
Okay, um, action items. So the school choice, we do this every year.
Yeah.
Um, did you all read in your packets? Um, do you understand what this involves, right? Does anyone need any explanation on that before we vote? Nope, so, um, do we need, thank you.
Do we make a motion that we, uh, choose not to participate in the school choice?
So we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Excellent, okay. Decision there. Our next item is, um, the vote to ratify the Western Food Services, uh, Workers' Contract. Everybody had an opportunity to look at that? Uh, do I have a, do I have? Yeah, do we have one?
Yeah.
Okay, a second? Anyone have any discussion on this? We all good? Look, it's great. All in favor? Okay, excellent. So we ratified the Food Services Workers' Contract. We need an approval of the minutes from April twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make motion to approve.
Okay, a second? Excellent. Any discussion on those minutes? No, good, all in favor? Boom, there we go. Minutes are approved. Do we have any new business that anyone wants to bring up? And if you don't wanna bring it up this time, we can just bring it up next time. All set? Okay, no new business. Do we have any public participation at this point? Nope, seeing no hands, there's no public participation. And so I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
All right, a second? Everybody all set, all in favor? Excellent.
Wait me.
Yeah, we'll do some, we need some signatures from you all before you leave. Have a good night, everybody.